Board of Adjustment will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News, notice posted on the Bolton Board of the Municipal Building, notice made available to the Township Clerk, notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star Ledger. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Weissman?
Here.
Mr. Tilley?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Yes, here.
Kalpech? Mr. Rogio?
Here.
All right, Roy's here. Mr. Blount? Mr. Mitterondo?
Here.
Mr. Ellie?
Here.
Chairman Cahill?
Here. Will everyone please stand for salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Caneely, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda tonight.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Caneely, for personal reasons, I'm gonna go with, um, item number ten first to get that out of the way. Since it was, uh, it will be one of the most time consuming that we're dealing with tonight. So, uh, item number ten first, it's twenty-four dash ZB, there's seventy-eight slash seventy-nine V. Manjeet Bawa Singh.
Sorry, there you caught me off guard, Mr. Cahill.
Sorry about that.
Not, not a problem. Uh, may I please, uh, or hello, um, uh, members of the, uh, of the board and board professionals. My name is Tim Arch. I'm an attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm here representing, uh, Manjeet Bajwa Singh. Uh, this is an application for a property located at seventeen-one West Seventh Street. Um, we are seeking tonight a use variance, uh, to, um, use the property as a gas station with a small convenience store, um, in a residential zone. Um, while I'm doing my intro, I am gonna just real quick share my screen so that you guys have something to look at while I am talking. Um, do you see the aerial currently?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, so this is the piece of property that we are talking about. It's this triangular piece of property, um, here located along Walnut and West Seventh Street. Uh, there is an, uh, auto mechanics garage that is, uh, just, uh, to the bottom of the screen there. It's right across from where the Arbor Rescue is, and there's some residences here, um, on the back property line. Um, in addition to the use variance, we are seeking some bulk variances, um, although the majority of these bulk variances are a result of the odd shaped lot. As you see, it's a triangle, though it has, um, uh, those dreaded two front yards. Um, so variances for lot width and frontage where fifty-six point eight is proposed are existing and seventy-five is required. Um, we are gonna be proposing a fence, uh, in a portion of the front yard area, uh, which is, uh, not allowed by ordinance. You're gonna see that that fence is, uh, part of the enclosure, uh, around the, um, uh, the tractor skeptical, which is required by ordinance. Um, uh, there's, uh, we are seeking, uh, the ability to, uh, put more than half of the parking in the front yard. Again, we have two front yards, so parking is going to, by necessity, have to be within the front yard area. Um, and setback for an accessory structure, um, is, uh, normally sixty feet. We are doing sixteen point two and seventeen point three. We're proposing a, uh, a canopy that's, uh, considered an accessory structure. And again, we have two front yards, so we're constrained by the, um, uh, by how the property. Um, I, I'm, oh, and, uh, just for the record, I'll mark this as A1, um, uh, the aerial exhibit, um, Mr. Caneely.
Thank you.
Like to then also go to, uh, what I'll mark as A2. And this is, uh, essentially a picture, uh, from Google, uh, Images or Google Maps that shows what the property looks like. Currently, it's a vacant, uh, vacant lot, uh, used to be the site of a Getty gas station and auto repair shop. Um, I, I went as far back as two thousand seven is when I could find that it was actually active. So it's, uh, so I'm, I'm assuming it's been, uh, at least fifteen to eighteen years that, uh, it's been sitting there essentially unused. I do want to note for the record or acknowledge that we have, uh, reports, uh, we have the tri-party report, uh, dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Chadwick's report, which is dated January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. We have a fire approval letter dated twelve twenty-three twenty-four. EPW approval letter dated, uh, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and the DNR Engineering Report dated February twelfth, uh, twenty twenty-five. So I do have, uh, four witnesses. Um, uh, I don't wanna keep anybody waiting, so we'll get right into the witness. Try to keep it as quick as possible. Stop sharing. Uh, my first witness tonight would be, um, uh, Mr. Manveer Bajwa, uh, who is, uh, who is here as the applicant's, uh, representative.
Are you present, sir?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand?
Sure.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Manveer Bajwa, Eight Peach Tree Lane in Chester, New Jersey.
Could you spell your last name, please?
It's B-A-J-W-A.
Thank you. Put your hand up.
Okay, Mr. Uh, Mr. Bajwa, you, um, you are the son of Manjeet Bajwa, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, uh, you, uh, are familiar with the location, familiar with the operation that you're proposing there, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna go through some of the things that, uh, were in the reports, and I just want you to, uh, acknowledge, uh, as the applicant if this is, uh, accurate or not. Um, so one of the things they were asking for in the reports is the operation, is the, the hours of operation. And we are, uh, asking to operate this facility, uh, from five AM to eleven PM, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, and again, just to, to be clear, what we're talking about is a, uh, gas station and a small convenience store. We're gonna, uh, we're gonna reuse what used to be the, I guess, the service area and turn that into a small convenience store, correct?
Yes.
And the intent of this, this isn't like a Wawa or a Quick Check or anything like this. This is like a real quick in and out, grab a loaf of bread or grab like a bag of ice kind of establishment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And one of the things that was mentioned in the reports was we're not providing any sort of seating or tables inside the convenience store to encourage people to spend time there and, you know, hang around, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and in terms of the numbers of employees that are gonna be on site, um, I apologize, I'm getting an echo. If anybody else getting that?
I think it's you, Tim.
Oh, is it actually coming from me?
Yeah, it's you. I can unmute it everybody else, it can only be you.
Oh, I apologize that why that would be the case. Uh, okay. Try to fix that next time. Uh, and so in terms of employees, uh, we're only, uh, asking that there'd be two employees there, correct? One for the gas station operation, one for the convenience, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, some of the things that were mentioned in the, in the, uh, reports, uh, one was, uh, fiber optic cabling or the fiber optic trenching. We're agreeing to put that in, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, in a, uh, in addition to that, there's an EV spot that we have, um, located, uh, and we are, uh, agreeing that we would make it operational, uh, prior to CEO.
Yes.
And, uh, finally, one of the things that was mentioned is, uh, indicating that there would not be a, uh, diesel fuel sale, uh, at the location. And one of the things we wanted the board to know is that there's actually two kinds of sales at a gas station. One is what's called low-flow diesel pumps and is a high-flow diesel pump, correct?
Yes.
And obviously, the high-flow diesel pumps are meant for large vehicles with large capacities. And we understand that we don't wanna try to attract any of that. You don't want that in the area, correct?
Correct.
But if you had your druthers, you'd like to have that ability to have low-flow to service small passenger vehicles, um, and individuals that wanna fill up diesel canisters, correct?
Correct.
So our preference would be to, if the board would allow to us allow low-flow diesel. But we also understand that, you know, we will defer ultimately to the board's, uh, uh, concerns if they have overarching concerns about that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, at this time, I have no further questions of, uh, Mr. Bajwa, and I will try to find out why it's echoing while.
Appreciate that. Does any members of the board have any questions for this, uh, applicant and about his testimony?
This is Chairman, just one question.
Sure, John.
Clarify the, is there gonna be sandwiches, ready-made sandwiches at the facility?
Uh, there may be ready-made sandwiches, nothing prepared, uh, there.
Okay. There will be no preparation, it won't be like a side kitchen or any of that sort?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Bajwa, I'm assuming lottery stuff like that?
Yes, it would be lots.
And cigarettes. Will there be any type of, um, CBD cannabis or vaping?
Uh, not to this point, no. There might be, uh, maybe, uh, there's some products that are which are gendered, so electronic vapes.
Uh, don't. I, I think you should clarify that. The town frowns upon vaping, kind of, uh, cannabis-related material, so I would.
Uh, I don't believe, uh, those, uh, devices are considered cannabis. Uh, they're, uh, electronic vapes, um, sold, uh, by many chains like Quick Check and Wawa's.
Okay.
Yeah, you would need to have, I believe you have to get a separate license or permit to sell cannabis-related products.
And, and no vaping. I couldn't think any echo was getting, no vaping?
I believe you can sell vape products, just not cannabis vape products.
Mr. Arch, you can proceed.
Uh, thank you. Our next witness is, uh, Tyler Vander.
Sir, are you present?
Uh, just so the board is aware, I, I muted myself, I can still get that.
I know, I, I just, I, I just, I, yeah, I'm echoing too. I just text the TV guy and said, there's something going on, can he figure it out? Okay. I'm sorry, guys.
Mr. Arch, is your witness present?
Uh, yes, Mr. Vander Valk is, uh, he is present.
He needs to unmute.
Mr. Vander Valk, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address, please.
Tyler Vander Valk, V A N D E R V A L K, sixty-four Valley Road in Butler, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Vander Valk, if you can, please just, uh, orient the board to, uh, the location, uh, to the, uh, your, uh, plans and, uh, and what we're proposing to, uh, to put there.
Before you do that, uh, Mr. Arch, what kind of witness is Mr. Vander Valk?
Oh, he's a, uh, sorry, he's a licensed civil engineer. Mr. Vander Valk, if you can please just put your, uh, credentials on the record, uh, so that the board accept you as an expert.
Yes. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current and in good standing. Uh, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I have been accepted as an expert in civil engineering, uh, before many boards in the state of New Jersey. And I believe, uh, this board actually, probably about five or six years ago, but.
Your credentials are fine, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Take it away, Tyler.
Tim, do you mind sharing A1 since, uh, you have that file?
Yeah, absolutely. I can get back to it.
If not, I have the aerial up as well, it just might not be the exact match. Thank you. Okay. All right, so a little bit just about the area. Obviously, um, we're in a residential zone here, but we're not entirely surrounded by, um, residential uses. If we look to the west, uh, we actually have the fire department, uh, and then a large parking lot and, and open field with, with some pavement. Uh, to the north, we have some single-family residential homes. Uh, and then south of us is what appears to be a mechanic's yard or contractor's yard of some kind. Um, that is shielded by a six-foot-high fence, uh, for the entire frontage on Walnut Street. Um, on that property, and then additional single-family all to the, to the east. Um, and then, Tim, I'm gonna go ahead and, and share the survey for a closer look to the subject property.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, this is the survey that was prepared as part of the application. Uh, this was done by Arthur Chappell dated July twenty-two of last year, twenty twenty-four. I believe this was filed with the application. Uh, this is the existing, represents existing conditions on the site. Uh, we can see that the site is, um, largely paved, uh, with fairly wide access points on both Walnut Street and West Seventh Street. Um, and particularly the one on Walnut Street extends fairly close to the intersection. Uh, we can see the location of the building. Um, that's an existing non-conforming location, uh, and we'd be looking to reuse that, that structure. Other than that, the site is, like I said, largely paved. We have some abandoned pylon signs, lighting, et cetera, uh, around the property. Moving over to the civil plans for the project. Uh, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanna make sure it's switched over. These are unrevised from what was submitted, uh, to the board, so I don't think we need to mark this. This is on the first sheet, uh, just to get a look at layout for the project. Again, the existing structure would remain, and that's towards the easterly side of the property. That prior maintenance garage would be repurposed again as a convenience store. And again, uh, rather small convenience store as, as they go, uh, most of these projects that we do for this client. He's really aiming for about twelve to fifteen hundred square feet. We're looking at about, uh, under eleven hundred square feet. Uh, so a bit smaller of a site, it's probably appropriate to have a bit smaller of a small, uh, store, so we're not looking to do any additions to it or anything. We're just gonna use it in its existing footprint. Uh, beyond the building itself, we're gonna be pro- uh, providing pedestrian access, um, around all sides but the rear. Uh, that pedestrian access extends out to both Walnut Street and West Seventh Street. Again, for, um, pedestrian access as well as, uh, bicycles if needed. Uh, this would be entirely separate from the drive aisles and vehicular traffic for safety. Uh, speaking of the drive aisles, access to the site would be limited now to two driveways, uh, rather than the, the three wide ones that were previously there. And these access points would be about, um, oh, one off of Walnut Street, one off of West Seventh Street. Uh, those would be controlled accesses with stop bars and the appropriate signage. Once we get into the property, you can see that the gas service, fuel service is, uh, centered. Uh, with those driveways, we're providing for four, uh, fuel pump islands, um, to service those vehicles with plenty of access around the sides of them and through the middle. Parking for the project is, uh, located both on the north and south side of the convenience store, as well as to the west, uh, adjacent to the intersection. Uh, parking requirements for this use would dictate that we provide eight stalls. Uh, we are providing nine stalls as part of the project. And just speaking to suitability to the site for the use, many of these projects that we work on for this applicant, we, we end up asking for parking variances just because, uh, things do tend to get tight. Uh, but in this case, we are providing the parking, so that speaks to the suitable size of the property for the use. As far as the pavement that was previously surrounding the majority of the property, this is being largely, uh, reduced down from seventy-five point five percent coverage down to fifty-nine percent coverage. So we're losing at approximately three thousand square feet of pavement off of the property, uh, which will be certainly a net benefit to the project. Uh, speaking to some other zoning, certainly we do have some variances required. We have, um, existing non-conformities as far as lot width and lot, uh, frontage. Those will remain unchanged as part of the project, but you can see fifty-six point eight feet where seventy-five is required. Uh, other variances we're seeking, uh, we have existing non-conforming setbacks, uh, I'm sorry. We have, uh, the canopy, we'd be seeking setback variances in the front yard, sixteen point two feet to the west seventh side, seventeen point three, um, to the walnut side. We are proposing, uh, refuse enclosure for the project. That's where the six-foot fence in the front yard comes in. This is located to the north side of the convenience store. We have a, uh, loading zone there adjacent to sidewalk, which can, uh, uh, easily approach the refuse enclosure. Um, and that will uh, be to, to pick up the refuse for the store. Uh, we are surrounding that fence despite it being a variance of six feet, uh, in the front yard. We're surrounding that with vegetation to shield some of that fencing. Uh, speaking of landscaping, we're providing, uh, new landscaping throughout the site, a heavy ever, evergreen screen on the easterly side. Um, lower shrub plantings around all the parking to shield headlights and to shield the parking lot. Uh, and then some shade trees throughout, uh, the property. Uh, we are providing some drainage improvements as part of the project. This is moving over to sheet two. Uh, again, we will have a natural reduction in, in runoff due to the, to the major decrease in impervious cover. Uh, but we'll be collecting our runoff, uh, rather than right now where it's sheet flowing out into the street. It will all be collected off the parking lots, uh, and brought into the storm sewer system. I should have mentioned on the first page, I should have highlighted our sign location. We're proposing a sign, uh, near the intersection. Uh, was mentioned in the, um, the professionals' reports that they would, uh, prefer to see a monument-style sign there that, rather than a large pylon sign. Uh, the applicant is open to that and, and we're willing to make that adjustment to shrink down that sign. You know, we could use smaller lettering, um, and, and just to clean it up a bit with a prettier base, uh, rather than the typical gas station pylon sign. Uh, lighting for the project is gonna be provided, uh, by means of the lights that are recessed within the canopy. So we're, we're not gonna actually have pole lights strewn throughout the property. Uh, we're gonna be using those canopy lights that are gonna be casting out a little bit to provide, uh, lighting for the entire site. Um, you can see levels range from about point three point two foot handles to directly under the canopy. Excuse me, it's only one point three foot handles, so we're keeping those light levels nice and low for the residential, uh, neighborhood. I just wanna check our variance list, see if there's anything else I need to touch on.
I think we probably hit upon everything. Um, if not, I'm sure we can, we'll, we'll come back around when the plan.
Who, who, who is in charge of signage? The engineer or someone else?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to field the signage question.
Any signage on the canopy?
Signage on the canopy. Typically, we would have, um,
No, your plans, I didn't see it.
Typically, it would just be the branding. So for example, um, this is gonna be a Delta station, so we would have similar, if you look at the pylon sign, the Delta that's on top, a smaller version of that would be on the two sides of the canopy, of the Walnut Street side and the West Seventh side. And those are typically, uh, the height of the canopy, fascia, which is three feet, uh, by five feet in length.
Is that canopy gonna be lit or just the sign?
No, just the sign, not the entire fascia.
The other question was, it has nothing to do with signage. Uh, the back corner of the property, there's some mature trees and I think there's a fence in there. I, the grading plate seemed to indicate it was getting changed. Is that not so? Are those trees gonna remain?
The trees are remaining. We are taking out that guide rail, um, and the old, in the old fence. Uh, but the trees that are aligned that, along that fence line you're referring to, um, oh, I don't have it up anymore, but yes, there is a group of trees along the fence line that will stay.
Cause they make a good buffer to the home behind it.
Okay.
And we're, we're definitely, we definitely understand that, and we wanna maintain, uh, in addition to adding as much landscaping as we can to, to maintain that buffer.
Thanks, John.
And I should also mention, we're gonna have new, uh, sidewalks along the frontage of Walnut Street, um, and then the majority of West Seventh as well.
I have no further direct questions for Mr.
Any other members of the board have any questions?
I have a question or two, just, uh, following up on the signage. The illumination for the signage, is that gonna coincide with the rest of the site? I believe you, what was the hours that we said with the previous? Five to eleven? That'd be the same for the signage?
That's right, the price sign would also, yes, that's correct. That would also turn.
Okay, and, uh, I know you made a comment about, uh, red lines on the drawing. You've seen our, uh, as Tim likes to call the tri-party report, the, the changes to the drawings that we'd like to see made in regards to the, the trench drain, um, landscaping, uh, fiber optic, et cetera.
Yes, I, I saw that. I guess the only question I had was really on the trench drain addition because that, the specific driveway you're talking about is set up to be a crown. So the street side of the apron is gonna pitch to the street, but the rest comes interior to the site. I didn't know if it would really serve a purpose. Certainly, we could work with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
So is it safe to say that the applicant has satisfied or agreed to everything on your site impact?
Uh, again, the, the only thing that we would ask for is, uh, there is an indication on that, uh, that indicates no, uh, diesel fuel at all.
Yeah.
We would, again, we'll, we'll defer to the board, uh, at the end of the day, but we would prefer to be able to have low-flow diesel cause it services, you know, personal vehicles and doesn't service, uh, larger vehicles. I know, I believe that was what the concern for the, uh, of the staff professionals were. I don't wanna speak.
Understood. Okay, any other members of the board have any questions?
One clarification, going back to the lights. Are we shutting the lights off at eleven, eleven o'clock but for the security?
Yes, I believe that was, that was what was asked by, by Mr. Mr.
So you'll put that, put that on the plan?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Arch, I think you can move on to your next one, uh, expert.
Okay, then, the, uh, William Byrne?
Mr. Byrne, are you present?
Yes.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Sure, it's William Byrne. Um, my office address, ten Main Street in Chester, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Byrne, if you can please, uh, just put your credentials as an architect on the record for the, uh, for the board.
Sure. Um, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed as an architect since nineteen ninety-four, so just over thirty years. And, um, I have, um, I've testified before, you know, many, um, land use boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I, I do probably several times a month, and I've been accepted as a expert in the field of architecture.
You're, you're great, sir, thank you. Your credentials are fine. Please proceed.
Mr. Byrne, floor is yours.
Okay, um, I think actually my associate is going to screen her if, uh, she could be, um, made a panelist. Here we go. Okay, so this is, um, this is sheet, uh, number one, un-revised as submitted. Um, and this sheet reflects the exterior views of, of the building, um, and what, what we are proposing. Um, essentially what's there now is, as was shown in Tim's photo. It was, uh, sort of a derelict, uh, service station from, from another era. And, and so what we're proposing is to obviously convert that into what would be a, a very small convenience store. And as part of that, um, conversion, we are removing the service bay doors as well as the entrance that's, that's currently there and replacing that as seen in the upper left drawing with, um, new, uh, storefront-type, uh, doors and window panels with transoms. Uh, the overwhelming goal of what we were trying to accomplish with these renovations was to make the building look, um, more compatible with the residential neighbors and something that has just a, a more friendly, more neighborhood-type feel. And so, um, as part of what we're doing is removing the brick veneer that surrounds the three sides as well as the sign panels and things of that nature that make it much more commercial and, and much more automotive in appearance and trying to make it much more of a neighborhood shop feel. Um, as part of that, we're, we're proposing the addition of some stone details as we see across the bottom and, and surrounding that main front entrance door. And the, uh, the remainder of the front facade as well as the left and the right facade are going to be clad in a fiber cement clapboard-type siding, again, something that we feel is more consistent with the residential transition, uh, to the homes, um, you know, adjacent and, and, you know, just in general, we, we feel it's just a much nicer, softer look for this type of, uh, this type of use. Um, the roof that exists around three sides, it's a parapet roof currently, is, is a is is a shingled roof and and we're also proposing to change that texture, that material to a standing C metal, which again, we feel is a little bit more of an upscale appearance um to the to the building and and will hopefully enhance the uh, you know, just the overall feel. The if we could jump to the next sheet. This is sheet two of our submission, again, un revised, and what this reflects is the floor plan, again, as as mentioned by um Tyler. The footprint of the building isn't changing, so we're not proposing any adjustments to the size. It's it's presently just under eleven hundred square feet. Um and as as mentioned, we're moving the main entrance to the market to the center. So we've got those double doors dead center on the on the uh front facade. And as we come into the into the market, we've got open floor area that's likely going to include you know, movable or freestanding um racking for for products, breads and chips and things of that nature. Uh we've got coolers um on the opposite wall across the back in the center section. And again, those would typically contain you know, your milks, your eggs, you know, sodas, drinks, things of that nature. Um to the left, we have a new um handicap com- uh ADA bathroom. So again, the bathroom that exists on the facility now, again, not in great repair, but nonetheless not sized appropriately. So we'll have a new handicap bathroom um being located in that left back corner. Um to the right back corner, we've got a storage area with the triple compartment sink, mop sink, hand sinks, that that sort of thing. So we have cleanup for the coffee um products that'll be sold there. And again, to the right, we have a a checkout area for the for the attendant and so for um you know, again, just just to service the market. Um so you know, again, basically, that that is the um the extent of the proposed changes. We a- again, the overwhelming goal here was to try to, you know, make a very efficient, you know, small scale. Um s- small scale neighborhood type market. Again, as Tyler mentioned, there's good pedestrian access. This type of market we've seen in other other locations and other towns that we've been involved with. Um you know, really serves the motorist well, but it also serves the community to some extent because it's just a much easier place when people can walk or bike to this type of 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 small market and and just pick up things that they may need without having to maybe get into a car and drive to a a busier you know, center shopping center or food store. So we we feel that this uh prototype is something that we've done, you know, many, many times over the last, you know, few years, and and it really does seem to make a very positive impactful um you know, conversion. So that basically covers what's being proposed.
Any members of the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Arch. Move on to your fourth witness.
Our final witness is Mr. Jim Higgins. Uh he's our professional planner, and I believe he is available.
Yes, I am.
Mr. Higgins, could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
I believe Mr. Higgins has been accepted as a professional planner before the court previously.
I agree.
Mr. Higgins, take it away.
I'm not gonna bother to repeat the description of the site or the surrounding area. I think that's been described uh very well by the prior witnesses. Um what I will do is go into the reasons for the granting of the requested use variance. The the site is in the R seven point five zone. Uh the gasoline service station, fee and store uh combination is not a permitted use in the zone. The permitted uses in the zone, the principal permitted uses are single family residential uses and governmental uses. There are a number of conditional uses that are permitted in the zone, which include public utilities, hospitals, basically schools, less but not colleges, places of worship, wholesale greenhouses, cemeteries, and solar energy systems. And quite frankly, when I look at this site, the unique nature of the site at a signalized intersection, uh and it's been it's essentially been fully developed in the past and it has a existing building on it that while it's, I would call it a derelict building, it's not dilapidated and it clearly can be reused. I don't think any of the permitted uses are really appropriate to the site. Uh the applicant applicant is proposing a gasoline station with a convenience store. And I think the site is particularly suited for that use primarily because first of all, it had been utilized for years as a gasoline station with a water repair facility. Uh that whole industry has changed considerably, which is why I I would suspect that's why it's no longer in operation, hasn't been in operation for years. Uh the auto cert- the automobiles have gotten much more sophisticated and a small operation like the one that was there would have trouble surviving. Uh but the convenience store would be a asset to the gasoline station. The the whole nature of that industry has changed to go from gasoline stations with auto automobile repair facilities to gasoline stations with convenience stores. And in most instances, some sort of additional income is necessary to help support the gasoline station use on a site, and that that's universal within that industry. Uh the site is particularly suited, in my opinion, for the use. Uh first of all, due to its prior the fact that it is at a signalized intersection, which does allow for better traffic control. And also that you have the existing building and the access to the site, which is very well suited to the proposed use. I think a number of the purposes of municipal land use law are advanced uh due to the granting of this variance. Uh that those would include to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use and development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And in this instance, you have basically a derelict site. It has a vacant building that's been empty for years that I think is is a detriment to the neighborhood that is within it is then basically an attractive nuisance, and this application will eliminate that attractive nuisance and provide significant improvements to the site functionally and aesthetically. Um provides sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety commercial uses. And again, the use that's being proposed on this site was the historical use on this site absent the automotive repair and adding the more appropriate small convenience store, which as was testified earlier, will not only serve people that are getting gasoline at the station, but also serve the immediate neighborhood and be a convenience to the immediate neighborhood. Um another would be to encourage the coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost development into the more efficient use of the land. And clearly by doing the act of reuse that the applicant is proposing of the service station that is a much more efficient use of the land. Uh I don't see how this site could reasonably be utilized for a single family residential use. So I don't think that would be an efficient use of the land. So I think what's proposed here is much more efficient than what would be permitted under the zoning. To promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. And again, you have a derelict site here that's unsightly, the building's unsightly. What's being proposed is a development substantial visual and functional improvements to the site, primarily the visual improvements, I think are gonna be a substantial benefit. So when I look at all of these a- aspects and and put them both together, I think there are special reasons for the granting of the variance. I think the general welfare is advanced, not only to the particular suitability of the site, but also due to the the application does enhance a number of the uh purposes of the municipal land use law. I don't see any substantial negative impact to the surrounding neighbor. That the uh plan as proposed is providing sufficient landscaping and screening. The uses that are adjacent to the site, the residential uses will be protected and buffered by the the very substantial evergreen screen that will be proposed. And the other uses that are but the site are non-residential uses. So I don't see any substantial detriment. And as far as the impact on your zone plan and your zoning ordinance, the when you do a zone plan, when you do a master plan, you do a zoning ordinance, particularly in a large community such as Piscataway, you don't look at every individual site. You look at the general character of an area. And if you have one small site or a couple of small sites that are different, you don't create a separate small zone for those sites when you, particularly when it's surrounded in a residential area. And it's much better i- if you, for example, if this site were to be designated commercial use in your zone plan, there would be much, there would be fewer controls over the development on the street. Because when you have a use variance situation, you you can have much more stricter controls and more specific controls that are specific to the use and the site that might not be envisioned in the ordinance when the ordinance creates standards for a very small commercial area. So I think what's being proposed here is not inconsistent with your zone plan or your zoning ordinance. I think it's really intended that this site be developed with variances, with use variances that would make it more appropriate and make it fit with the with the character of the area.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. I have no further questions.
Any other members of the board have any questions for this witness? Comments? Hearing none. Your summation, Mr. Arch?
Uh thank you. Uh I I think it's uh I'll I'll be very brief. I think it's it's very obvious that this is a site that is in need of some uh of of a viable use to come in and really uh revitalize it. Um it is, as Mr. Higgins said, it is it is not a site that is uh suited for a single family residential um because of the uh the constraints and the shape of it. Um we are not proposing a mechanic's garage, which is what was there before. Uh this is this is not going to have any uh uh mechanic component uh to it. It's merely going to be um for a gas station uh to fill up and to go and a small convenience store, which we believe will service the neighborhood. Um we don't think any of the relief that we're requesting is is anything uh unreasonable. And uh with the with those small exceptions that we talked about uh on the record, uh we are complying and agreeing with all of the professional reports. So we would hope that you look favorably upon this application.
Thank you, sir. Any members of board have any comments or questions they'd like to offer at this time? Hearing none. I would personally like to go out to the site um before we vote on this. I don't know if that's something that your uh client could hold on to for a couple of weeks. Uh what Laura, what's our next um meeting?
March twenty seventh.
I would be prepared to vote on it at that time, but I I really like to go out and um take a look at the trees that Mr. Chadwick was speaking about uh to absorb all the uh possibilities of this application. So I would say that we push this out to the to March twenty seven and give myself and other members of the board the opportunity to go out and take a look at the um location.
Uh Mr. Bajwa, is that is that something that is uh agreeable to you? Um it means that we would we would put off on a on a vote. Uh we wouldn't have to re-present the entire application again at that time, but we would put off a vote until the board members had a time to go and do a site visit and to um you know, make themselves more familiar with the site. Short of that, we can obviously ask them to to push it to a vote tonight, but they do have the ability to uh to ask for the adjournment.
I believe that's fine. Uh that should be uh more acceptable.
I appreciate that. It's it's been a couple of years since I was over in the Arber section, and I do remember the the dilapidated uh gas station. Um we approved the Dunkin' Donuts down the street on uh South Washington, and I remember going down to the for that. Uh that, like I said, that's a couple of years ago. So I I appreciate your understanding and affording this board the opportunity to go down, look at the place, and then we'll vote on it on March uh twenty seven. Mr. Kinley? Anybody that's here from the public, this matter is going to be continued to March twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. There will be no further notice by the applicant. At the March twenty seventh meeting, any member of the public that wishes to speak for or against this application will have an opportunity to do so. Uh this meeting on this application is concluded tonight and will reconvene on March twenty seven.
Okay, let's move on.
Thank you.
Item number. Yeah, I lost my train of thought here. Give me two seconds, guys. I apologize. Too many notes. Item number six, twenty four dash ZB dash seventy four V, Lucas Garcia Arena.
Is Mr. Garcia Arena present?
I am.
Sorry, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Your name and address, please?
Lucas Garcia Arena, sixteen hundred West Fourth Street.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
Yes, I wrote something down to make it easy for myself. Um I have a pizza slice shaped corner property with no privacy. Um I'd like to replace the chain link fence on the Elk Street side. There's the Elk Street and then the Fourth Street with a six foot vinyl fence. Um Elk Street is a one-way street. It's low in traffic. The fence would not interfere or obstruct any drivers approaching the intersection. It would actually start towards the back of the house and go all the way back to the garage. If you guys have the the survey, you you will see that on the eastern side or on the right side of of the property. Um I've had a lot of issues. I've had unknown people open my chain link gate to cut across my backyard to avoid walking to the corner. There's actually a liquor store down by Rock Ave in Fourth Street, so I've had a lot of traffic. People, I've actually had to put a a lock on my fence to avoid that from happening. Um and like I said earlier, I have no privacy. I want to be able to grill. Give my dog and future kids a safer space and enjoy some sense of privacy. I don't have a fence on either side. I have there's anyone walking on the street on the sidewalk on either side of my house has complete clear view of my backyard. I I got a grill. I haven't used it yet just because it doesn't feel, doesn't feel right.
Thank you, sir. Jonathan, can you uh jump in on this, sir?
Yes, certainly. Uh Mr. Garcia, have you seen the report dated December eighteenth, twenty twenty four?
I don't believe so.
I mailed it to you.
Okay, so in that report, I'll I'll walk through with you now. So one of the things that staff was uh wanted some more information from you on, as you said, Elk Street is the quieter of the two streets. You're only asking for the fence along Elk and not to enclose the entire yard. Could you explain why?
Yeah, well, because Elk Street has a larger, wider view on sixteen hundred on the sorry, on the fourth street side. I have some landscaping and that's kind of where the cars are parked. So it sort of blocks most of the view without requiring a fence. Uh but on the other side, on the Elk Street, it's it's completely a wide open. So just putting a fence on that side would give me sufficient privacy to be in my backyard and not have full, you know, vision of all my surroundings. It it does, if you drive by the property, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. Or even look on Google Maps, you'll see what I'm referring to, the that has some privacy already.
Okay, and one of the other comments we had was to have the fence run from the the back corner of the house where it looks like there's a a landing uh next to the Bilco doors, have it run from the corner of the house to the corner of the garage where it currently is. Just to have that be set a little bit further back from the street. Is that something you're agreeable to?
Absolutely, yes. That's that's reasonable.
And just for the the boards, um for the for the sake of the board, while it is a six foot fence, the top uh fifteen inches is an open picket, so it isn't a a full six foot solid fence. Uh we would require there to be some uh buffering, just a landscape buffer, just so that way it's not a a huge white uh visual um impediment. So if we could get some landscape screening in there installed within say ninety days of the installation of the fence.
Okay, I don't know exactly what what that ref- like what that means. So the the example of the fence I sent in has that piece at the top where it's sort of open like you mentioned. Would if it were strictly closed off like a, you know, like the typical ones we see, would that be permitted? Or does it have to be the example that I sent in? They're both six foot. It's just the difference of the top part. One is.
You would be you would be allowed to do either either one. We'd still wanna see, we would still wanna see uh some shrubs, some landscaping at the bottom of the fence to soften it up.
Okay, on the street side. Yeah, right, on the outside, obviously. Okay. I can I can get that done. That's not a problem.
Okay, and then we'll. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
I was, I just wanted you to address the shed and garage replacement in the future.
Yes, yes, yes. And then last uh last two points, uh the shed or the garage, if you need to replace them or uh significantly reconstruct or repair them, it's going to need to be in a conforming location. But for the purposes of this application, we'll we'll allow them to remain where they are.
Okay, yeah, the shed has been removed. The only thing that's there currently is the garage.
She has been removed, okay.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Okay, and then we just made a comment just for the board that um prior board approval in nineteen ninety permits this this dwelling as a valid prior non-conforming use as a three-family dwelling.
Thank you, Jonathan.
No further questions, thank you.
Anyone else on the board have any questions? If not, I'd like to open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions about this application?
Ken, you could just raise your hand. No one, Chairman?
Okay, close the public portion. I'd make a motion to approve this application.
I'll second it.
Please call and roll.
Mr. Waismann?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Did Cal Peshia ever show up? Uh, Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Blount, Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Your application has been approved on the condition that you comply with Mr. Mizrahi's report. We will memorialize this at our next meeting and send a copy to you. You don't need to be here for that. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good night, sir.
Good night.
Thanks, we'll be in touch.
Let's move on to item number seven, which is twenty-five dash ZB dash zero-three V, Capelabin and Kinja Patel.
Are the applicants present?
Yes.
Okay, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Seven Ruth Place, Piscataway, New Jersey.
And who am I speaking with?
This is Bennett Patel and Kinjal Patel.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board while you're here?
Uh, yes, so, uh, when my house was built by the contractor, the canopy was, uh, built, uh, a little larger than the plan showed by my architect. I'm seeking variance for that.
Jonathan, you want to get both, you, sir?
Certainly. Uh, we don't have an issue with the canopy remaining. The staff's concerns regarding the, uh, the structures, the, um, masonry structures, the landscaping and the lights that are existing currently in the right of way. The, uh, the road currently is a fifty-foot right of way. The master plan width is sixty-six feet, so we're going to need an eight-foot right-of-way easement uh, on the Patel's property. So that would require all of the, all of the masonry structures, the lights and the landscaping, uh, in that area to be removed.
Oh, the question is, is that like the driveway that you're saying?
No, the driveway, the driveway is fine. So what, what we're referring to is you have, you have masonry walls, you have a stone wall.
No, we.
Sorry?
I don't have any, uh.
Oh, I, when we did a
To the left of the driveway.
When we did a review of the site on the side of the driveway, it looks like it's, it's less than.
Oh, on the side of the driveway, you mean the.
Yes.
Okay, so by removing that, can I build like just a driveway on the top of it or how do you want me to remove it this long?
Uh, however you choose to remove it is up to you. There's no uh, restriction as far as I know for replacing that with additional blacktop, uh, for the driveway. But that.
If I may help out this conversation, if I could, uh, speak on behalf of the applicant.
Uh, who are you, sir?
My name is Corey Fernandez. Uh, I was the architect on the rebuild project originally.
Yeah, could you? Good. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, for, for some background, um, licensed architect since, uh, twenty sixteen, I've appeared before, uh, neighboring communities, boards, um, Hillsborough, Bridgewater, Raritan, Somerville. Um, license is in good standing, uh, active in New Jersey and New York, and, uh, my company's based out of Somerville, New Jersey.
Okay, you can proceed, sir.
Thank you. Uh, so, um, just a little history on the project. Uh, there was a fire house, um, when the owner was rebuilding, he elected to make some improvements. I helped the owner make the improvements. As part of that, we designed a portico. The plans that went into the, uh, township, the portico was within the setback, the contractor, uh, made the portico, uh, a little bit bigger, which was infringing on the front setback. So the variance we're seeking is, um, the required front setback is twenty-five feet, whereas the proposed portico or the already built portico is twenty-three point nine feet. Uh, I spoke with the owner regarding, uh, making the, uh, the changes to the front part of the site, uh, in order to meet on the new sixty-six foot right of way. And, uh, I think he's ready, willing and able to make those changes. But what we'd like to ask the board is to be very specific in the resolution so that, you know, we can come up with, um, the right language to tell a contractor to do this work. So if it's okay, I'd like to present a Google, um, street view, so we can look at the site elements that the board believes is in the right of way and, and select which ones need to be moved. Would that be okay?
Okay, Jonathan's my expert. Jonathan, you okay with this?
Yes, thank you.
Please proceed, Corey.
Okay, thank you. Hey, anybody give me? Okay, I am sharing a Google Street View. Uh, I will rotate it a little bit, but if you want, I could take a screenshot and we can submit this as exhibit A one.
A one, yes.
Okay, so looking at the front yard, uh, trying not to move as much as possible. Um, we have a small retaining wall. We have a light, uh, another masonry element, and since scroll a bit to the left, we have another light monument here and a Belgium block curb. So if, if, um, the engineer could just explain which elements specifically need, need to be removed.
Certainly. So there is a, it looks like a CMU block construction with the stone veneer, with the stone cap that the light fixtures affix atop. That entire masonry structure, not the Belgium block curbing, but that entire structure, uh, that appears to be anywhere in the ballpark of twelve to sixteen inches in height, that must be removed if it's in the township right of way.
Understood. I'm just gonna scroll to the left here, and we have a little bit of that wall here as well.
Uh, the same, the same comment for the other side, uh, especially that, especially that light fixture. Uh, it looks like it's less than two feet from the, the curb.
I'm just gonna switch. Uh, let me just take a screenshot of this. I can submit it to the board afterwards. Submit it. Uh, so this is the property survey, which was submitted as part of the original variance application, uh, with exception of these two lines, which I just drew earlier in this meeting. Uh, this line represents thirty-three feet from the right of way. So this is the line that I understand is the new right of way, and everything in front of this would have to be removed as a contingency of approval.
That is correct.
Okay, I, I think, um, it, it's all workable. Uh, I, I'm a little concerned that the retaining wall actually is acting as a retaining wall for this higher slope here, and when we remove it, there will be some grading concerns, uh, on both sides, but we'd, we'd have to, you know, tackle it with, uh, you know, with a civil engineer and see how we can grade this properly without the wall.
And Mr. Fernandez, would you like to submit that last drawing that you showed us with those two red lines so that I can attach that to the resolution?
Yes, uh, we can submit this as exhibit A two.
Yes, and, and, and that should give you some clarification for any contractor that's gonna do the work?
Yes.
Okay. And Jonathan, we have no issues with the portico?
No.
It can stay where it is?
Yes.
Got it. Any other members have any questions or comments about this application? Was that a yes or what? Did I make a mistake? No? Okay. I open it to the public at this point. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this, this, uh, application?
No one, Chairman?
Okay. Uh, Corey, could you unscreen, unshare?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Give me a moment, I'm working with.
Take, take your time. We're gonna vote. I'd make a motion to approve this application with the changes, um, that Jonathan suggested.
I'll second it.
Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Waismann?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Your application for the portico variance has been granted. Uh, the structures in the right of way must be removed, and you can submit those items so I can attach that to the resolution.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, sounds good. My apologies. I'm just trying to figure out how to unshare this.
Uh, in the meantime, we're gonna move on to item number eight, twenty-four dash ZB dash seventy-one V, Paul and Nanette Manfree.
Mr. Kaplan, are you present?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Uh, Richard Kaplan, Reuben Kaplan Associates, on behalf of Paul and Nanette Manfree. Property is fourteen twenty-seven West Fourth Street. Uh, it's an R seventy-five zone. The purpose of the application is to apply for a certificate of pre-existing non-conforming use. Um, it's a two-family house. It's a single-family zone. We'd like to continue the two-family use. Um, we have, I have two witnesses. One is Nanette Manfree. She's the property owner. Um, her family's lived there since nineteen sixty-four, and, uh, she'll testify briefly about that. Uh, we have one expert, uh, Paul Ricci. He's written a report, uh, which is in the application. The report is dated October twenty-one, twenty-four. Um, uh, it's maybe thirty pages. There's exhibits which include photographs, um, aerial photograph, property deeds, tax assessment records, uh, building files. Um, we, we, we're gonna try to be brief. The application, uh, we think is complete. The report is fairly complete. Um, and, uh, we believe that we've satisfied the criteria. So, uh, my first witness is Nanette Manfree. You want them sworn in separately as they testify?
Yes. Ms. Manfree, are you present?
She's definitely present. I'm not sure if she knows how to unmute.
Yes.
Okay, there she is.
Okay, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Yeah, your name and address, please?
Nanette Manfree, fourteen twenty-seven West Fourth Street, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, Ms. Manfree, um, when did your family purchase the house?
Uh, my father and mother bought it in nineteen sixty-four as a two-family house.
And at the time, you were living in the house?
Yes, I was six years old when we moved here.
And have you or other family members lived there continuously since nineteen sixty-four?
Uh, my parents have. I lived here till I got married, then I moved away, and then I came back to take care of my elderly parents for about twenty years, and I'm still here.
But even when you were away, you'd come to visit, so you know that it continued to be a two-family home, right?
Absolutely.
Um, and, um, do you know approximately when the house was built?
I think the record showed nineteen twenty-four.
And did you do an Oprah request of the town to get whatever assessment records existed?
Yes, we did.
And that shows back to nineteen fifty-six that it was a two-family?
Yes.
And that's included in, as one of the exhibits in Mr. Ricci's report?
Yes.
Um, and you, 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 you saw one of the reports, how can you do with mailboxes? Can you explain what the history was of that and what you've done recently?
So the recommendation, um, at the end of the report was that there was only one mailbox for the two-family, but we just always had just the one, and we would just separate the mail every day and hand it to the tenant, but since we did get the report and we, um, accepted the recommendation, we went out the next day, purchased one and attached one to the house. So we now have apartment one and apartment two with the tenants' names on the other one.
And that's Mr. Chatterick's report, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So just in summary, your family purchased it nineteen sixty-four, you or other family members have lived there since then. It's always been a two-family house, and as far as you know, it was built as a two-family house in around nineteen twenty-four.
Yes.
Okay. Um, that, that's really the, the limit of what I wanted Ms. Manfree to say.
Yeah, thank you for putting it on the record. Any other members of board have any questions or comments about this? Hearing none. I'm gonna open it to the public.
I think there's one more witness.
Oh, there is nothing.
Yes, there's one more witness, Mr. Mr. Ricci. Please, please, uh, put him on. Mr. Ricci. And Mr. Ricci is gonna be testifying as a professional planner, so we will give his credentials if you'd like.
Mr. Ricci, do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Your name and address, please?
Paul Ricci, R I C C I, one seven seven Monmouth Avenue, Atlantic Highlands, New Jersey.
Thank you.
And could you briefly provide your credentials for board's approval?
Uh, sure. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since the year two thousand. Also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners or, or, or National Certification. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University, which I received nineteen ninety-seven.
Your, your credentials are fantastic, sir. We, we can proceed.
Mr. Ricci, could you give us a brief summary of your report? Just, it, it's, it's in the application, so we don't really want you to go through the.
Sure, I, I can be very concise. Uh, I was reached out by you and the Manfrees to, to undertake an evaluation, um, to, to study the property and provide a planning opinion, whether this property was indeed a illegally non-conforming two-family, uh, home. You've already provided much of that information. I conducted a site visit. During my site visit, I talk about this in the report, I observed two electric meters, two hot water heaters, two oil heaters, two new natural gas heaters for a conversion, two separate front doors as you come to the building, past the front open door with very old wood and decorative. Um, with a separate entranceway up to the second floor, right af- after that front entrance door, we went into two separate doors. In the back of the home, there's a stairwell that runs to the second floor upper unit, uh, all the way down to the basement and out to the rear yard. Um, I witnessed generally old woodwork. Um, I've lived in two homes like this in my time. Um, one in New Brunswick as a graduate student, one in Westfield a few years later. Um, so the type of home was familiar to me as a, as a, as a traditional two-family home design. Uh, I looked at the township records. Um, um, I looked at the township records that showed, and I confirmed this with a tax assessor, that the home was identified as a two-family home in the township's tax records. It's been taxed that way for as long as digital records exist. Um, I, I did review, and it's in the, it's in part of my report, the nineteen fifty-six tax evaluation card that showed this property as a, as a two-family home. And, and again, the, the home in, in my planning finding, uh, showed classic features of a two-family home. Um, so it was, it was my opinion in the, in the report that, uh, this application qualified to be a, for a certificate of non-conformity.
And in your professional opinion, the house was built as a two-family house in nineteen twenty-four, nineteen twenty-five. Thank you.
Yes, indeed.
Um, we, we think this, the report speaks for itself, so rather than, you know, going through the exhibits and the details, um, you know, we can answer any questions, but, uh, like I said, we think the report speaks for itself, and the criteria have been met based on the testimony and the report that was submitted.
I believe that as well, sir, and I'm gonna open it to the public now. Any questions or comments from the public about this application?
No one, Chairman?
Okay, close the public portion. I'd make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Call and roll.
Mr. Waismann?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Thank you. Kaplan, memorializes this at our next meeting.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Good night.
Good night, gentlemen. Let's move on to item number nine, twenty, twenty-four dash ZB dash sixty-six slash sixty-seven V, Solar Landscape LLC.
Good evening. Donna Jennings from Law Firm of Williams, Coleman and Spencer, on behalf of Solar.
Good evening. Donna Jennings from Law Firm of Williams, Goldman Spencer, on behalf of Solar Landscape LLC.
Good evening.
Would you guys like me just to begin?
Yes.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So, as the board is aware, the applicant is here this evening seeking minor site plan approval with a conditional use variance and bulk variances to install rooftop community solar panels on the existing warehouse and office building with associated ground-mounted equipment on property located at one forty Ethel Road West and identified as block nine one zero one lot five fifty-one point oh one on the township's tax maps. The property is approximately six point two acres as located in the L I zone. The existing warehouse and office building will remain. Uh, just for the board's benefit, Solar Landscape is a premier commercial rooftop solar developer in the country. As a leader in commercial real estate clean energy development, the applicant has invested heavily into its building capabilities to support the next phase of its growth. This past year, the applicant secured eight hundred and forty-seven million in project investment and financing, enabling it to continue its growth and create more than two hundred commercial rooftop solar projects to power over fifty thousand households. The state first launched the community solar program as a pilot program in two thousand eighteen, and the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities has since established a permanent community solar program. Individuals and businesses are now able to greatly benefit from solar energy systems without needing to install solar panels on their own property. Instead, solar energy is generated off-site for use by members of the program. Members receive several benefits, including paying a reduced energy bill by utilizing clean and renewable energy resources. Significantly, these community solar projects are required to serve a majority of low and moderate income households. In the present application, rooftop solar panels are permitted as a conditional use in the L I zone. The applicant requires a conditional use variance from standards in ordinance section twenty-one dash one zero one four point three A with respect to installing the ground-mounted equipment in the front yard and installing accessory structures in the front yard, which is the pole. The applicant also requires relief with respect to installing accessory equipment in the front yard and not providing fiber optic conduits along the property frontage, as well as sidewalks along Ethel Road. The record will show the applicant satisfies both the positive and the negative criteria. The positive criteria is satisfied as a matter of law because municipal land use law specifically recognizes solar energy facilities as inherently beneficial or a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare. The record will further show that the applicant satisfies the negative criteria because the impact on the surrounding properties and the effect on the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance are de minimis. As acknowledged by Mr. Chadwick's January thirty-three view letter, the proposed landscaping will provide adequate screening for the equipment, uh, in the front yard. Generally, the proposed rooftop panels and equipment will not have any impact on the surrounding land uses. In support of the application, the applicant will rely on two expert witnesses, Ryan Hallosi, the, uh, engineer, and Andrew Janu, our professional planner. We do also have members of Solar Landscape on the line. If there's a particular question that neither of the experts are able to answer, we'll have them sworn in to answer those questions. And this is a matter of record-keeping. I did want to acknowledge that the applicant is receipt of the following three reports: the engineering planning development dated February thirteen, twenty twenty-five, the board planner report dated twenty, January thirty, twenty twenty-five, and fire prevention bureau dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. So, with that, if Ryan is out there, um, we'd like to get him sworn in and he can begin.
Ryan, are you out there?
Yes.
Could you, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
I'm Brian Hallosi, H O L L O S I, and the address is eighteen, nineteen eighty-five Highway thirty-four in Wall, New Jersey.
And if you could, Ryan, just give the board the benefit of your background and qualifications, please?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a project manager with report engineering. Um, I graduated with my civil engineering degree from the College of New Jersey. Um, I've been a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey since two thousand twenty-four. Um, I've testified in New Jersey, but never in front of the sport.
Thank you, sir. You can proceed, man.
Thank you. If you could, um, Ryan, just describe, uh, the project, and if you're gonna rely on an exhibit, you wanna, can we pull it up so everyone can see it?
I will share it now. This will be exhibit A one. Let me know when you see it.
We can see it now.
Um, this exhibit is the proposed aerial, um, I mean, this is the existing aerial with the proposed roof-mounted solar panels in blue and, uh, um, proposed ground-mounted equipment with the proposed landscape, um, in the front yard.
Right, so if you can describe the applicant's proposal?
The applicant is seeking approval to construct roof-mounted solar panels and associated ground-mounted equipment on the existing building. The ground-mounted equipment includes new utility poles and transformers, switchboard, and other associated equipment in the front of the property.
Can you just, with your pointer, show us where that ground-mounted equipment is and the pole? And I don't know if you can zoom in on that, so people can actually see it. There we go.
Two poles are right located here, the transformer, and then associated equipment.
Okay, and what are those green dots?
And these green dots are the screening for the equipment. It's seven evergreen trees that are approximately about six to eight feet tall. Um, and as you stated previously, the board planner letter has already approved that this is enough screening for the equipment.
Okay, and can you just address the power that's generated from this facility? How much is gonna be coming off of it?
Yeah, the, it, there's approximately about two thousand three hundred and twenty-seven modules that will be producing more than one point six million kilowatt hours, which is enough to power two hundred homes annually. And as this power generated by this project will be sold to residents in Piscataway and surrounding towns at a twenty-one percent discount, and at least fifty-one percent of that power will be sold to low and moderate income residents.
And if you could just address for the benefit of the board their maintenance schedule and any corrective measures if any of the panels get damaged?
Yes, the maintenance schedule is usually a two-man inspection team that would visit the site twice per year and perform inspections and routine maintenance, and the life expectancy on these modules is about fifteen to twenty-five years, and once the modules reach their life they will be decommissioned in accordance with all applicable laws and regulations and replaced with new modules.
And if the board were to grant an approval, do you know what the, um, construction schedule would be, when they would anticipate that this project would be online?
Um, upon start of construction, it usually takes about three months to complete, and it will not be phased.
Okay, and if you could just, um, I believe that there are some bulk variances and also they're related to the conditional use variances. Can you just, for the record, tell us what the deviations are?
Yes, the, um, the applicant is requesting a D, D three conditional variance. Um, although roof solar system is permitted as conditional use in the zone, they are not permitted when the associated equipment is installed in the front yard.
But what is that actual deviation? What's the requirement and what's the setback?
Um, so the exist, the requirement is, um, if I pull, uh, this, or previously planned submitted, right now the proposed is eighteen point two, and the, um, like, the requirement is seventy-five feet.
Okay, and is that the most ideal place to install the ground-mounted equipment?
Yes, since the existing, um, electrical infrastructure is already in the front of the property. Um, it just makes the most viable sense on this property to be between the building and the front.
And when you work with the utility company, they basically direct you where their poles are gonna be?
Yes.
Created?
Yes.
Okay, and what about any other outside agency approvals? Do we have, the applicant have those approvals?
We have the Middlesex County Planning Board approval and then the Fire Prevention Bureau, um, approval.
Okay, and then there were, you had an opportunity to review the letters issued by the board's consultants?
Yes, we will be, the applicant is also requesting two waivers. The first one is from the fiber optic installation ordinance. The ordinance indicates that the board may require non-residential properties to install two four-inch PVC conduit along the property frontage. I assume for potential fiber optic installation in the future. The improvements are almost exclusively located on the rooftop with minimum improvements on the ground. The proposed application has no impact on existing telecommuni- telecommunications infrastructure, and we'd respectfully, respectfully request a waiver from installing the conduit. And the second waiver would be for not installing the sidewalk at, along the property frontage. Based on the conversations with the board engineer, we understand the township recently constructed , um, Ethel Road West and would like sidewalks installed along the roadway as part of their pedestrian accessibility plan. The property is located within a commercial corridor that we're not expect to see much if any, um, trap, pedestrian foot traffic. It appears that only two properties along Ethel Road West between Sutton's Lane and Selton Road have sidewalks and none on the applicant's side of the street. As such, the applicant is requesting, um, a waiver for this as well.
And the applicant's use itself doesn't generate any pedestrian traffic, is that correct?
No, the walkability on site is not being affected by the, um, proposal.
Okay, thank you. That's all the direct questions I have for this witness.
Any of the, any of the members of the board have any questions or comments? Jonathan, can you, um, reiterate the township's policy when it comes to sidewalks, please, again?
Insulting these sidewalks is something we, we really, uh, need to see here to, to move this project along. It's, uh, it's an equity issue. It's a mobility issue. Uh, I understand your position of it being a, a commercial uh, district, um, that doesn't preclude folks from passing through it to other portions of the town. So, we, we really need to see the pedestrian accessibility across the site.
Yeah, I mean, I guess our only response is, you know, we're just, we have a leaf on, lease on the rooftop, not the, the property itself. The property owner controls the site, so I'm not, this would be something we'd have to work out with them, I guess.
Sidewalk goes in the right of way. Well, that, you're not it's the township property that you would be installing the sidewalk on. Is there a sidewalk across the street?
Uh, Ryan, can you pull a Google Earth up by any chance?
I believe there's not sidewalk across the street, but I will pull it up right.
Yeah, everybody take a look.
And Jonathan, also, could you, um, give testimonies to the benefit to the township for the condom? While they're looking that up. Thank you.
So, it's a, it is a, it is an ordinance, uh, simply because the town is getting itself future-ready uh, for fiber optic services that are gonna benefit not only the residents, but also businesses in town. It's something that is going to need to be undertaken, uh, piece by piece, and this is an opportunity for the, the town as a whole to be brought up to speed with this, um, forward-thinking amenity and utility.
I mean, again, this doesn't really use the fiber optic. It wouldn't benefit the solar panels in any way.
It's part of infrastructure for this commercial neighborhood. It's, you know, the fact that you might not use it directly uh, or minimally is not the real issue. You heard what the planner said is, it's to um, put new infrastructure in place to take advantage of what technology is dictating. I, I think that you know, you got minimal, minimal improvement along the front of this property. And the, the request for waivers, um, in my judgment, don't have a lot of weight.
Thank you, John. Ryan, were you able to pull up that Google?
Yes, can, should be able to share.
Thanks, appreciate you.
Did you see it?
The bottom, bottom portion of that screen seems to show sidewalk along the joint.
Well, the applicant, I mean, the, the property across the street is not in front of us tonight asking for.
No.
Yeah.
Just saying in terms of the
Yeah, no, I can appreciate it.
Doesn't you know, this Ethel Road industrial area is probably thirty, forty years old, and you know, the township's policies have adjusted and um, the sidewalk, the issue of sidewalks has gotta be twenty years' policy for the community at least.
I've been down that road a bunch of times, and I've seen people taking their lunch rakes and walking, some bicyclists as well, so I, it does, it does have foot traffic, and it's getting more since the apartment complex on Stelt and, and Ethel, um, they're taking in more residents. So, people need a place to walk, especially on that side of the town, so.
Does the town have a, an ordinance that permits a payment in lieu of construction? They're, they're, solar installers are not really sidewalk, you know, they're not developers. Do you have a payment in lieu?
Jonathan, do we have a payment in lieu?
No.
Okay, well, they're on listening and, uh, wait for them to respond to me, but maybe, uh, if we don't have any more questions for Ryan, we would just move into the planning testimony.
Yes, please.
Back on these two issues?
Let's move, let's move on.
Okay. Okay, this time I'd like to call up our professional planner, Andrew Janu. Saw him.
Mr. Janu?
We can't hear you, Andrew.
Can you hear me?
Now I can, yeah.
Yes. Mr. Janu, could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Your name and address, please?
Certainly, it's Andrew Janu, a principal with Beacon Planning, three fifteen Highway thirty-four, Colts Neck, New Jersey.
Thank you. Could you spell your last name, please?
Certainly, J A N I W.
Thank you.
If you could, Andrew, please give the board the benefit of your background and qualifications?
Certainly. Uh, I have a bachelor's and master's degree in civil engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, as well as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Uh, my licenses are in good standing. I've been a principal at Beacon Planning now for twenty-six years, currently serving as the planner for the Borough of Carteret, the Borough of Freehold, the Township of Livingston, and redevelopment advisor to South Amboy and Bayonne. Uh, I've testified throughout the state of New Jersey and in twenty twenty-two.
I, I think you're more than qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you could, Andrew, just for the record, you've had an opportunity to visit the site and the area around the site?
Yes, I've reviewed, uh, I went to the site, I've reviewed your ordinance, your master plan, the professional reports, uh, as well as the application presented to the board this evening in preparation.
Okay, and if you could just, uh, review the, uh, proofs that the applicant has to demonstrate that it meets both positive and negative criteria in order for the board to grant an approval here?
Certainly. So, as the board knows, this property is in the L I one light industrial district. Solar energy systems, uh, and particularly roof-mounted solar energy systems are permitted as conditional uses. Uh, we are seeking, uh, bulk relief or, uh, front yard setback. Uh, these are existing, are not changed by this application. Forty-one point four feet exists, fifty feet is required, uh, that is unchanged by this application. Uh, building coverage is thirty-nine point four percent, whereas thirty-five is permitted. Again, we are not adding any building coverage to this. Uh, the condition that we do not satisfy, uh, with respect to the conditional use is the front yard setback for the accessory equipment. Uh, we are proposing eighteen point two feet, whereas seventy-five feet is required, and I think, uh, Ryan indicated on the plan where that equipment is located. It, it consists of two poles, a transformer, and then the building-mounted inverter equipment, and that will be screened by the landscaping as was demonstrated and reviewed. Uh, in preparation for this, we have to reconcile the application with your, uh, master plan as well as with the purposes of zoning. With respect to the master plan, uh, I think it's very clear with respect to clean energy uses. You encouraged it. You started encouraging use of green energy back in two thousand and five. And the most recent reexamination report had, uh, a goal that stated the use of solar energy systems throughout the township has continued to increase in residential and industrial areas of the township and should continue to be encouraged. In addition, the township should investigate the use of renewal, renewable energy sources, including wind power systems and appropriate layer areas. The continued use of renewable energy sources in the township and throughout the region will serve to reduce dependence upon non-renewable sources.
Andrew, just a little slower, little slower.
Such as natural gas and oil. Uh, so we are on point with, uh, the purposes. Such as natural gas and oil. Uh so we are on point with uh the purposes of your master plan. It's very clear. It encourages these types of uses. Uh what we're proposing tonight is a community solar uh system where the energy will be sold back to residents within your community. And at least fifty-one percent of that power will go to uh residents that qualify as affordable with respect to income. Um and as the board knows, variances can't be granted just for the benefit of an applicant. There has to be a public purpose. In this case, under the municipal land use law, which defines what those public purposes are, I believe, we advance two of those purposes. Uh the first is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Renewable energy sources, including photovoltaic sources, are recognized by the state of New Jersey as inherently beneficial uses, meaning it's something that. As of its nature on face, uh benefits the general welfare of a community. And presumptively satisfies the property, the positive criteria in variance relief. And I do believe that is appropriate uh with respect to this application. Uh condition and within the MLUL is also very much on point, and that is simply to promote the utilization of renewable energy resources, which this project does. So when we're looking at the de-relief that we're seeking, we have an inherently beneficial use. Uh it's recognized by the state as something that advances the general welfare of the public. It's something that's encouraged within your master plan. Uh however, we do need to look at the negative criteria and inherently beneficial test. There's something known as the seeker reconciliation. Which talks about the identification of the public benefit of the application that is clearly providing clean energy. Uh identifying any uh nuisances created by the application. This is a low-rise roof-mounted system. Uh the only condition we don't satisfy is the situation of the equipment in the front yard. Uh we're screening that. It's uh it's something that's somewhat mandated by P S E and G in terms of where the poles go, so it's an efficient location. Uh we are violating the setback, but we've mitigated that impact through landscaping. Uh so we certainly believe that now we have identified very little nuisance, but would visually be intrusive will be screened appropriately. Uh but again, the equipment in the front yard is is very minor. And as you drive down Ethel, uh you'll see a lot of electrical equipment in the front of buildings, transformers, uh meter panels and the like. Are situated on many of the industrial buildings in the immediate neighborhood. It's not something that's out of character. So when we balance the the negative criteria here, meaning that the uh the impact of the uh deviation along with how it's been mitigated. Uh I don't think it'll be uh anything that creates any type of nuisance and on balance, it's it's a good use variance. It's a it's a good energy source. It's clean. It has a minor deviation that's been mitigated. Um and with respect to the bulk relief that we're seeking, when we're whenever we're seeking a use variance, we could look to Price B Himeji, which says. You know, the use uh is somewhat of a deviation from what's generally permitted, but you can subsume the bulk standards here. Uh we have two bulk issues that are not being touched by this application. They were approved when this building was first situated on this property. Um and then the one uh that variance that we are seeking again is uh putting the equipment within the first seventy-five feet of the front yard. We've mitigated that. So when we look at it on balance, I think it's it's a better zoning alternative. It's a good application. It'll be something that has substantial public benefit. And I think this community can approve this.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
That's essentially the testimony uh from the applicant. We have been communicating through text messagings and they have indicated to me. That um they will accept doing the sidewalk and the conduit. Um if that's what they need to do to get this approved. They do want to just let the board know that. Uh in the right of way, there are poles and other things, so the sidewalk's not going to be a straight line. It's going to have to meander around some of the things that are in the in the right of way, so hopefully that's okay. Otherwise, otherwise, they're not going to get into moving poles and everything else, guy wires that are out there.
Understood.
Okay.
Jonathan, does that sound about right?
Uh I think there should be an attempt made to work with the utility company, since there is going to be some coordination needed anyway for the installation of the new poles. Uh it'd be preferred to have that sidewalk be a straight run. Uh and again, since you're already working with the utility company for the installation of the poles, we'd like to see some attempts be made to to work with them on that.
We'll certainly ask, but I don't want it to be a condition to be straight because I don't know. Utility companies, they're not that easy.
Understood.
Yeah, they can be difficult and they don't show up a lot of times as well. So um any other members of the board have any questions or comments about this application? Hearing none, I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone, excuse me, anyone in the public portion have uh any questions or comments about this application?
No, and chairman.
Okay, close the public portion, and I would make a motion to approve this application with the sidewalk and the um fiber optic conduit. Can I get a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Have a great night. Um I'm going to jump off right now. I'm about to lose my voice. Uh I would ask that Mr. Weissman step in.
I have it.
You had eleven, Steve, and you.
Yep, number eleven.
Resolutions and you're good to go. Ladies and gentlemen, have a great night. See you March twenty.
Feel better, Sean.
Feel better, guys. Number eleven, twenty-five dash ZB dash oh four V. That's um the Two Hundred Centennial Property LLC.
Yes, uh good evening, uh Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Lawrence Sachs. On behalf of the applicant, Two Hundred Centennial Property LLC, uh property located block six seven zero three lot six point oh seven. At Two Hundred Centennial Avenue, uh the property is located in the LI five zone. Uh we're in front of you this evening uh to seek uh use variance relief uh to permit. A autism therapy center uh in this office building at Two Hundred Centennial Avenue. Uh and we also require a bulk variance for a parking deficiency. Uh two, we presently have two hundred and ninety-nine parking spaces, three hundred and sixty are required. Um and Mr. Chairman, I have two witnesses this evening. I have Amanda DePietro, uh who was the uh chief people officer for Beerman Autism Centers. Uh and then I also have my professional engineer and planner, Mr. Mark Lieber, uh from East Point Engineering. Uh we do acknowledge receiving uh two reports, a report dated February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Uh from your division of engineering and planning and development, and we're certainly prepared to go through that at the appropriate time. And we also have a report. Uh from your planner, Mr. Chadwick, uh which we will also address. So uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can have Amanda DePietro, who I know is on the screen. If she can uh unmute herself and show herself and we'll get her sworn in.
Ms. DePietro, are you present?
Yes.
Could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give?
I do.
Your name and address, please.
Uh my name's Amanda DePietro. It's D I P I E Tiaro. And uh my corporate address is thirty seventy-seven East Ninety-Eighth Street in Carmel, Indiana. Uh four six two eight O. My my physical location, my work location is uh Twelve Miles Road in PBD, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keneely. Uh all right, Mr. Pietro, uh what is your position with uh the Beerman Autism Centers?
Uh I'm the chief people officer and also function as the chief administrative officer as well.
Okay, and if you can uh give the board some uh indication as to the nature of the business of Beerman Autism Centers, what what you do. And what you provide, and uh we'll get into some more detail as well.
Yeah, sure. So we are a healthcare organization. We treat uh children ages two to nine who have been diagnosed with autism uh spectrum disorder. We provide uh ABA speech and occupational uh therapy, as well as diagnostic uh services for those uh seeking. A diagnosis for for ASD. Um each of our clients um receive services that are paid through commercial health insurance or. Uh secondary state-funded, you know, programs such as uh Medicaid. Uh each uh client is required to have a prescription for uh treatment, and that determines. The number of therapy hours. Uh they have to have authorization, you know, for um for ABA uh speech and occupational therapy uh services.
All right, what does ABA stand for?
Applied Behavior Analysis.
Okay, and uh you are not a school. You are strictly a healthcare provider, is that correct?
Correct. We are not educational in any way, uh shape or form, and I'm sure, you know, as you all know, uh health insurance does not pay for for education. These are medically necessary services that are prescribed um. With, you know, with a, yeah, with a prescription treatment.
And how many facilities do you have nationwide?
We have uh twenty-two.
Okay, and you have several in New Jersey already. Am I, am I correct? You have one in West Orange, Berkeley Heights, Princeton, Ramsey. And obviously, uh hopefully this facility in Piscataway.
Correct.
All right, now, uh we're looking to, uh you're going to be occupying approximately eighty-nine hundred square feet on the second floor of Two Hundred Centennial Avenue. Uh how many employees do you anticipate having initially uh at this location?
Probably eight to ten.
Okay, and what would be the maximum capacity of number of employees? I know you had mentioned to me in our discussions perhaps around twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay, and in terms of the treatment, if you can describe to the board, is it one-to-one treatment? In other words, does each professional therapist. At OT uh uh each, each individual therapist deals with one particular child, is that correct?
Correct. A hundred percent of the time, we're in a one-to-one ratio, so the children are scheduled for. Treatment sessions with the clinician who's assigned, you know, to their case for each of their um respective sessions.
And how long do those sessions generally last?
Could be um thirty minutes, you know, up to three hours. It depends on uh each child's. Prescription and treatment plan is individualized, so, you know, they could have. Thirty hours a week of ABA therapy, but only two hours a week of occupational, you know, therapy. So the sessions are. You know, like I said, thirty minutes to could be three hours.
All right, so if we have a maximum of twenty-five therapists and employees on site, you would really just have a maximum of twenty-five patients then, if it's a one-to-one ratio in terms of treatment? Okay, all right, so I know there was, uh and the hours of operation are from when? When, when?
Eight fifteen uh to four forty-five, Monday through Friday.
All right, you're not open on weekends, right?
Correct.
Okay, uh and in terms of deliveries, uh are the deliveries just the norm of normal office uh medical office types of deliveries? That's by either uh UPS, FedEx, or United States Postal Service?
Correct.
No tractor-trailer deliveries?
No.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right, uh now, let's talk a little bit about how uh the children come into the facility. So give me a normal scenario. Parent has a scheduled appointment. Their child is going to come in. Uh they will park in the parking lot. They will then walk the child into the building, just like they were seeing any other tenant in that building.
Yeah.
They'll walk into the interior of your uh therapy center. Uh they will be delivered to a therapist, is that correct?
Yep, so there would be um um an administrative person assigned to the front desk, just like you were to check in at the dentist. Um and then their assigned therapist um meets with the parent, talks about what is going to happen in the session, pass off if the child occurs. And uh you know, then they head into their their therapy.
All right, and during the time period of their scheduled appointment, they're solely with that particular therapist?
Correct, until they move on to the next appointment and, you know, see their next assigned therapist.
Okay, got you. All right, and uh uh the parents uh generally will, the parents are not encouraged? Or or is there even room for the parents to wait in the facility for the therapy session?
Um they don't wait. Um they are entitled, based on our policies, to come in and observe a therapy session anytime they want, so they can. Stay for a portion of a session. They can pop in at any time during the day if they wanted to come uh and observe, but typically. They leave their child for the timeframe that they're there, you know, for their prescribed treatment, and then come back and pick them up.
Okay, all right, and when it's time to pick them up, uh they come back to the therapy center. The child is provided to them. They walk out and they walk the child to their, to the parking lot. Okay, right. Um and in uh in terms of food, is there, is there any, I know you have a kitchen perhaps in the site, but that's that's for the staff, is that correct?
We have a staff kitchen and we have a refrigerator where if they have a lunchbox that needs to be put into or refrigerator. We have storage, you know, to be able to do that, but we don't have any type of cooking equipment or. You know, they, there's a, you know, Keurig machine and a microwave.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right, um, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions. I just wanted the board to be aware of what type of facility this is. It is not a school. It is a medical provider. Uh and I, because there was a concern in the report raised by the engineer about a drop-off in pickup operations. Um but again, parents are going to be uh bringing their children to the site, just like they were going to see any other tenant in that building. And then they're going to be retrieving them when the session is over. So certainly, if the board has any questions, Ms. DePietro is available for questioning.
Thank you. Are there any questions on from any of the board members? I have.
I'm going to go to you next. Go ahead.
Uh the question that uh Mr. Sachs just brought up, I raised in my report. Um. Have you discussed with your landlord the ability to have reserved parking spaces next to the building? Or pickup? And the result?
Mr. Chadwick, I I could probably answer that for you. Um if it's necessary, we could designate a few spaces in that building, because if you recall, I know you're familiar with the building. There's a covered portion. Uh I'm sure the landlord would have no problem with uh with designating some of those spots uh for this particular tenant.
Because the clients, the autistic child can sometimes be difficult in terms of moving from a car to some other space. And I think it would be convenient for both the parents, the child, and the operators to that. Those spaces, so you will do your best to get as many as possible?
Yes, we will, Mr. Chadwick. It's a point well taken, and uh we'll try to get them as close to the uh to the door and main door into the building, uh to the covered parking area. Uh but I, but I wanted to just indicate that it's not a school where everyone's coming in at the same time. You know, these are scheduled appointments, so.
Understood. That's why I don't think you need, you know, twenty-five spaces.
Correct.
You know, a couple spaces is going to do fine.
That's fine.
As many as you can get.
Will do.
Thank you.
Any other?
I have no other question.
Thank you, John. Uh Jonathan, did you have any issues with this?
Uh testimony satisfied all my questions. So no, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. No other questions from the board? Then I'd like to open this up. Are there any other witnesses?
Oh, I have one more witness, Mr. Chad.
Thank you.
Okay, um I have Mr. Mark Lieber, who is a professional engineer and planner. And I know he's here, because I saw.
Mr. Lieber, are you present?
I'm here.
Could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address, please.
It's Mark with a C. My last name is Lieber, L E B E R. And I'm at East Point Engineering. Our office is eleven South Main Street in Marlboro.
All right, Mr. Lieber, if you could give the board the benefit of your uh professional qualifications and uh background.
Hi, good evening. I graduated with a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from Drexel University. And completed the MBA program at Rutgers Graduate School. I was licensed in two thousand and three as an engineer. In two thousand and five as a planner, and in two thousand and six, I completed the Certified Municipal Engineering Certificate Program.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lieber. That's very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, so Mr. Lieber, um uh primarily, we're here tonight because we need a use variance, uh and we need a bulk variance for parking. Um let's talk about the parking first, and then we'll uh we'll we'll wrap up with the use variance. So as part of uh your task, uh did you have occasion to take any parking counts uh at this particular site?
Yes, we did. We we were at the property, in fact, yesterday for a couple hours, just to see what the flow is and how much activity is there. And we found that at the peak hour, which was eleven AM, there were thirty-two cars in the parking lot. And two hundred and sixty-seven available parking spaces.
All right, so roughly ten percent of the parking lot, a little bit more than ten percent of the lot is occupied during a peak hour.
It is, that's correct.
Okay, um and uh. Okay, and, Mr. Lieber, is that common, what we're seeing today, unfortunately, with, with commercial office space in central New Jersey? We're not seeing occupancy rates that you normally would have seen in the past?
Yeah, you know, the total area of the building, including all the corridors and common areas, around sixty-two thousand square feet, and there's partial vacancy in the building, but even with the board of tenants, which is posted in the first floor, it just doesn't seem like there's a lot of activity.
Okay, and this site was approved with two hundred and ninety-nine parking spaces when it was constructed, is that correct?
Yeah, and I've been able to verify that count with the survey that was done in September of two thousand and twenty.
Okay, so in your professional opinion, I guess even under a C-two analysis, flexible C-two, can this variance for parking, which I think is quite, quite dramatic in terms of the fact that there's really an overabundance of parking, can that be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes, a hundred percent, I mean, if there's one property that I've witnessed, this one certainly does not have a parking issue.
All right, and in terms of any impact on the surrounding neighborhood, are there any other site improvements proposed with this particular project?
No, there are not.
Okay, we'll get into the report, because I know there are some site, site cleanup issues that the staff wants us to address. All right, and in terms of the use variance now, I know Mr. Chadwick in his report mentions, and I agree with him, that this is an inherently beneficial use, so we don't need to satisfy the positive criteria. If you can briefly talk about the negative criteria associated with the use variance?
Yes, you know, this is a term you've heard already tonight about inherently beneficial, and this type of use is afforded some protections under the MLUL, because it is classified as such. And inherently beneficial uses are those that serve the public good and promote the general welfare, most common example, that would be a hospital, schools, childcare centers, group homes, many utilities, in fact, you just heard, solar panels is inherently beneficial. So, in the land use law, it's presumed that you would satisfy the positive criteria in the granting of a use variance, if you had this protection, but what you still have to address is the site suitability and the negative criteria. Now, site suitability, this particular property is five acres. Again, you heard, there's two hundred and ninety-nine parking spaces. Honestly, this is a perfect property for this use. All the access and all the activity to this building is in the back. It's set back far enough from Centennial Avenue that it doesn't require any new traffic patterns, it doesn't increase any substantial traffic and trips to this property. We already discussed that parking is not a concern. The only thing that needs to be done here is an interior alteration of the eighty-nine hundred square feet space to accommodate this use. I, I mean, to me, you know, looking at this property, it would really be hard to conclude that this site is not suitable for the use, because it's almost set up exactly for what the applicant needs. And I want to talk about potential negatives and detriments. Again, it's hard to find, because when we hear applications and we talk about negatives and detriments, the two most common things in New Jersey are traffic and stormwater. There's no changes to the site proposed, and we already discussed that this is not a significant traffic generator, and other negatives that you typically hear about is, you know, things that are associated with land disturbance, you know, construction activities, you know, work within wetlands and environmentally sensitive areas, tree removal, all those types of things don't even apply to the application, it's literally an existing building that we're reusing a vacant space that's right now not utilized, and we're not creating a nuisance in any way. We're not interfering with the neighborhood, there's very similar large buildings on this road, which are all mixed uses. So I don't think that there's an incompatibility with the neighborhood, so I really don't find any negatives associated with this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lieber, I think that covers that testimony. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to just briefly go through the report, the two reports, and then certainly, Mr. Lieber is available for any questioning. All right, so we have.
I could help you out, my report.
Your report, Mr. Chadwick, I have no, no issue with your report, so, and I really don't have any issue with the engineering report, I just want to get some clarification and maybe make a few requests. So, as to the February twenty-fourth report from your Division of Engineering and Planning and Development, certainly, certainly if we have to comply with any affordable housing obligation, we'll do that, but I'm not sure if it's even applicable in this matter. Number two will certainly have everything reviewed by your Township Fire Commissioner. I think we've addressed number three through the testimony of Ms. DePietro. Number four, I think we addressed with Mr. Chadwick, we'll work with the landlord to try to get his, get a few spaces close to the building, which will be dedicated for patients to be dropped off. Number five, I think, again, was also addressed by the testimony of Ms. DePietro, and I think that runs consistent with number four. Number six, I mean, obviously, we're not going to be getting any, any deliveries of any significance other than maybe some paper or an Amazon delivery to this office, so I don't think we should really be required to provide any specific loading zone, I'll defer to your engineer on that. Number seven, yes, of course, we'll, we'll clean up the site in terms of any dead, dying or missing trees. Mr. Lieber, can you comment on number eight? I know there was a request or a suggestion about some parking islands being added to the plan.
The addition of the parking islands would just further reduce parking, I, I, you know, I don't know if that's what the board's intent is here. Again, there's no site improvements proposed as part of this project, it's just an interior alteration to accommodate a new tenant. So, you know, I, I don't know really if the client is open to installing these islands, I think I'd need to get feedback from the board.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, at this point, Mr. Chairman, I think we'd like to request a waiver of that. You know, certainly if we were doing some site improvements, I think we'd be, it'd probably be more appropriate, but I'll defer to your engineer on that. Number nine, yes, if there's a shipping container, it will be removed. Number ten, yeah, I think there is, I've been to the site, we'll clean up any debris that's under the covered parking area. Number eleven, I did speak to the client, and if the dumpster enclosure has not been completed, we will make sure that it's completed with appropriate fencing. I think that's probably maybe what your engineer is referring to. Mr. Lieber, how about number twelve? I know the, there's a request about EV charging stations, if you can comment on that.
Yeah, I spoke with the owner, and would it be acceptable if we provided one dual charger, which would address two spaces? And that really would cover the requirement for what is presumed this tenant's occupancy?
If it's covering, if it's covering the, the number of spaces required for the amount of occupancy, one dual, in my opinion, should be sufficient. I know, John, if you feel, if you feel similarly.
I've had the same circumstance, the dual facility is fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, number thirteen, all right, that's, that's probably the big issue, we, we understand the parking lot is not in great shape. The only thing I would request with respect to the, respect to the parking lot repairs would be that we, we be provided a little bit more time than twelve months to do so, and we're certainly willing to enter into a developer's agreement, would like to come up with some type of phasing schedule, certainly, you know, we, we've got a problem with occupancy in this building, certainly this tenant is going to help us from a financial standpoint, but we would need some time to, to go ahead and make those repairs, so if we could stretch that out past twelve months, you know, certainly that would be beneficial to the landlord, and I think for the future of the, the future viability of this building.
Mr. Mizrahi, would you be comfortable with eighteen months?
Yeah, eighteen months should be fine, we'll do a phased approach, understanding that if there's any immediate needs,
Yeah.
they get addressed first, but for the entire surface of the lot, eighteen months should be fine.
All right, and I think we're, Mr. Lieber, I think we're amenable to doing the, the first fifty feet of the driveway entrance immediately, is that correct? After you spoke to the landlord.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that part right now needs attention, so I think making those turns in the right turn in, we would do that right away.
Okay, let's see, number fourteen, there's no signage proposed on this facility, any signage will be in the interior of the building. Number fifteen, deals with the PVC fiber optic, and from having listened, having listened to the seven, six prior applications, I guess we're going to have to do that, is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
That is correct.
All right, we'll, we'll provide the easement, you know, I, we'll figure out how we're going to deal with that, I'm not sure how that gets installed, but we'll come up with a plan as well, and again, we'd like all that to be part of the developer's agreement as well during that eighteen-month period, if that's possible. And then sixteen and seventeen deal with, Ms. Lieber, can you comment on sixteen and seventeen? I think that has to deal with sidewalks, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a, I guess, on our prior design, there's a multi-use path that's supposed to go down this portion of Centennial. You know, I do have questions, for example, does the PVC conduit go under that path, or does it have to go somewhere else? And then the other thing is, is this something that we could also do in stages, so that that could be done after the occupancy under some other agreement?
I can speak with the director.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Oh, sorry, I, I can speak with the Director of Engineering about the location of the conduit relative to the multi-use path, but these are, and I don't want to speak for Jim here, but these are, these are items I believe we can include in the developer's agreement as well.
That's what I was just gonna say, Jonathan.
Yeah.
All right, that, that would be really helpful, I mean, it's, you know, something we could do a separate plan for, and then we could show you all the stages.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I think I've covered the reports, and I don't have anything further of Mr. Lieber, so certainly is available for any questioning.
Okay, I have a question, Mr. Chadwick, we're requesting help with the parking islands. Was, was that a recommendation that we had, or was there a requirement?
Jonathan brought it up.
Oh, Jonathan, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, that's all right, so the parking islands, listen, if we're, if we're addressing the, if we're addressing the missing trees, the dead trees, we're re, we're resurfacing the parking lot, the planting islands were to increase the, increase the green space within the parking lot. If we're, if we're getting after the replacements of trees in the lot, I'm, I'm willing to be flexible on that, and certainly something we can work with, work with you on to see if that, if that makes sense to include or to let go.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd like to waiver on that, I mean, certainly we will, we're going to clean up that lot, Jonathan, there's no question, but, you know, certainly, now if I come back at a later point with another tenant, and I need a parking variance, I'm going to lose a substantial number of spots, I'd hate to do that. But, yeah, so we'd be asking for a waiver of that, but, but we'll work with you on terms of whatever landscaping needs to be supplemented or replaced there.
Okay, I'm open, I'm open to a waiver, and just, you know, we'll see how the, how the board votes on it.
Okay, that's fine.
Mrs. Chadwick, I have a question for you. The point you made about the access parking lots assigned for these, for this business, should they be marked that these parking spots are dedicated for?
Yes, yeah, I mean, the, the nature of this, it's not like a public school, everybody shows up at eight o'clock, they're, they're kind of come in and go, and they're, they're open from, I think she said eight-thirty to four forty-five or something like, something like that, and I think, you know, the three or four spaces would deal with the turnover, and all the autistic kids are not the same, but, you know, you, you have some that are going to be very nervous getting out of the car, and this doesn't make sense trying to drag them across the big parking lot and get them in the building.
I, I don't disagree.
For, for anybody, so I would say yes, this is a long answer for an easy question, yes, they should be signed.
And we'll do that.
Okay, thank you. Are there, and I have, that's into my questions, anyone else on the board have any questions? Hearing none, I'd like to open this up to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions?
Or comments?
Or comments, thank you.
Yes, we have a Michael Hazel.
Michael?
Mr. Hazel, I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand?
Yes.
The testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes.
Okay, your name and address, please?
Michael Hazel, H-A-Z-E-L, and I live at three fifty Netherwood Avenue.
Thank you. Go ahead with your question.
My wife, she's also here, we're directly behind the property, so we had a question about open spaces, like, is there a plan to do anything outdoors, where there could be more noise, like playgrounds or anything of that nature?
Not at the present time, and if, if there ever were a playground to be introduced, it would be away from any residential areas, Mr. Hazel, but no, there's no plan.
And if they wanted a playground in the future, they would have to come back before this board.
That's correct.
Okay, I cannot hear you, and I don't know who's speaking.
Oh, no, a question about the charging stations, would they be close to the, to the entrance, or would they be further back towards like where, where we are, towards the back of the, the parking lot?
Well, I think that's going to be dependent upon where the electric conduit can be, can, you know, can match up to that. I, I, I couldn't answer that question, Mr. Hazel.
They're, they're usually nearest to the building, because it's the shortest run to get to the service panel.
Better have, better off having an engineer answer it than a lawyer, thank you.
Mr. Hazel, we can't hear you.
Uh, yeah, no, my, my wife is here too, and she's letting me know, she's seen a lot of arguments break out over charging stations, so she was just wondering if that, if, if two were sufficient, if a lot of people found out that the charging stations were available, is that strictly for the use for this organization, or is it open to the public?
Well, I, I guess that there are, there are different types of charging stations that can be provided. One of them would be open to the public, the other ones would be for a fee, I, we haven't even determined that one yet, but I don't think two charging stations is going to pose an issue for anybody, so.
And all, all we can request is that the applicant provided a charging station for its square footage, so the one dual charging station covers the requirement for that applicant.
This is Martha Suarez, I'm the other owner of this property, Michael Hazel is my husband.
I, I, I cannot hear who is speaking.
I just introduced myself, but I'll do it again. My name is Marta Suarez, I'm the other owner of record of this property.
Okay, ma'am, I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand?
Of course.
The testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Continue.
Go ahead, ma'am.
All right, so, now I lost my train of thought, we were talking about the placement of, of the charging stations, right? So, I understand that two is all that's required, and that's fine, but I don't like how wishy-washy this is sounding about the placement, because honestly, I have seen fights break out, I've seen people honking their horn all day long because two Teslas are taking up the charging stations all day. So I really would like to know where you're going to place them, that's number one, and then I have a question for Mr. Pietro, if you don't mind.
Okay, well, in, in terms of the placement of the charging stations, we haven't determined that yet. I'll ask you a question, would you like them to be placed adjacent to where your property is, or would you like them placed adjacent to the building?
As close to the building as possible, it would be fine with me.
That's fine, that's what we'll accommodate then, and Mr. Pietro, if you can come back on, certainly she's available for any questioning.
Ready?
Website of your organization, and I think it's terrific, I think, you know. I think, you know, having them in the neighborhood is no problem at all. My only concern is these events that you hold on weekends, these sensory-friendly events that are on your website. They are on Saturdays, all the ones that, that I was able to pull up. And I understand that you're all over the country, it's not just here in New Jersey. But the pictures that you have, some of them show what appear to be traveling petting zoos and all kinds of stuff that I could see how they would be really appealing to the kids. But these are open to the entire community. So I want to know how you're going to handle traffic and noise and cleanup for all of that.
Actually, Ms. Hazel, I can probably answer that question. There's no outdoor activities proposed under this particular lease. So their lease is to lease eighty-nine hundred square feet within this building. If they're going to have an outdoor activity, they may have it elsewhere in town. But if your concern is, will it be in the parking lot, I can assure you that it will not.
Side of side, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anyone else?
No, one chairman.
Questions or consent, thank you. I closed the public portion of this. I'd like to ask one more time, any questions from the board, comments? And I would like to make a motion to approve this with the modifications made. And can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Will the secretary take the call?
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Mr. Weissman?
Yes. Mr. Sax, we'll memorialize this in our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Canelli. Good seeing you. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for your courtesy, and I'm very impressed that you got through seven applications in two hours, so kudos.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you. Buddy, thank you.
Moving on to item number twelve, adoption of resolutions from the regular meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We have the resolution of Deep Kumar Patel, which you voted to approve, Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Those are all the resolutions for this evening. Adoption, number thirteen, adoption of the minutes from the regular meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
If passes, thank you. Item fourteen, adjournment, can I get a motion for adjournment? I'll make it, do I get a second? Thank you, Mr. Mitterondo. All those in favor? Approved. Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
Have a good night.